With clay or watercolor, paint or chalk. So the person standing immediately to my right, maybe isn't DaVinci yet, maybe like I am DaVinci yet, but you were able to view the paintings that were recently covered by a pretty good reporter from the Citizens News. You would see that to my right is a great artist, to my right is a person that captured the very essence of our humanity. And she did it in such an important time to people that are so deserving, who so appreciate it. She captured, so first, let's just talk about like an AP art student who gets the highest score that you can get and gets accolades for all the categories. I don't even know, right, what all the categories are. I can only dream to do something like that. But in a time, in a pandemic, where none of us are immune from the pandemic, and we know from the very beginning that there's heroes among us, and when you're a frontline worker, we don't have medical folks here today. The pandemic has impacted so many people, and there's people that are trying, that are busy and taking care of everyone, our nurses, our doctors, I love that one, by the way, I like them all, but I love it. And you'll see scrolling, and this is right from the Citizens News, photos of all the art, when I went to go take photos in the lobby, they were already gone, but we realized they were already here and posted online. So Tiffany Nugent had been recognized for extraordinary work and art, for being what I think is the future DaVinci, for capturing the essence of humanity and paying tribute and appreciation to those who worked tirelessly during the most difficult times to keep us safe. Her work is now on display at Waterbury Hospital. I encourage you to check, it was on display here at Nochtuck High School for quite some time. I encourage you to read the article, it's embedded in board docs, take a look at her artwork, and most importantly, be on the lookout for future productions and scoop them up real early and cheap while you can. Okay? And I congratulate you, Tiffany Nugent, for you, in recognition, to awarded this certificate on behalf of the Nochtuck Board of Education, December 9th, 2021, in recognition of your extraordinary artwork. Congratulations. All presentations are going to be right here. Thank you so much. Thank you. This is another special award here tonight. I have some connections, and I don't look old, but I happen to be the former principal of the next recipient of the award. So if I could please have Manny Manuel Arbeloa, please come up, and did you, is there anybody with you here today?
Yeah, we have a P section leader.
Great, and I don't have their names here, so do you mind introducing them? Having those section leaders come up?
Yeah, we have Natalie, our head drum major of the marching band, and Connie, our front ensemble section leader.
Oh, excellent. I lost Connie instead of hello in the hallway today, I'm not sure. Come on up. So, I at Cross Street School was Manny's principal, so it's amazing, it's a gift to me to be able to see him come and take our marching band and lead our students to certainly great heights. I also have a personal connection because Manny's father was my college professor, his man is my professor, he is, he's an amazing man, so I want you to make sure you tell Professor that I said hello and gave him a hand. Yes, please. So if you've read lately about our band, or if you were at Thunder in the Valley like myself, watching some folks run around and handle everything, our band this year, and if you see the certificate, we don't usually do certificates this long, but I, there's no way I was going to remember all the accolades from what they just really achieved. So Manny and the marching band, if I can just hand that to you, thank you. Recently, they participated in a championship. So this is awarded, this certificate is awarded on behalf of the Nochtuck Board of Education on December 9th, 2021, in recognition of winning the Class II Open New England State Championship, placing third in their class in the Nationals, along with winning awards for best music, best percussion, best overall effect, and best color guard. Nochtuck has long had a wonderful tradition of very strong music program, both choral and instrumental. Manny came over, came back to us, he was a music teacher here, he went on to another district that won't be named for a little while, but we got him back, and he, in his first year here, took our band to such levels that we've never achieved before, placing in Nationals and winning in England, et cetera. So on behalf of the Nochtuck Board of Education, congratulations for your outstanding contribution to not only to our community, to our school, but the awards that you brought home. You guys rock, and keep up the great work.
Thank you.
Congratulations, everyone, amazing job. That then brings us to approval of the minutes. Could I have a motion to approve the minutes from the November 10th, 2021 regular meeting? We have a motion by Marilyn and a second by Mr. Scolling. Any discussion?
I just want to say thank you. I had asked for some amendments to them, and they were done ahead of this meeting, and I thank you for that work.
Absolutely. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? All in favor, that motion passes. That brings us to public comment. If a member of the public does have public comment, please step to the podium and state your name and address for the record. And just for a point of information, at our last meeting, we did amend our bylaws to state that members of the public have three minutes at the podium. So if you have public comment, please step to the podium and state your name and address for the record.
Mr. Chairman, if we just make sure that in board docs, we update that as well, because it still says five to the public when they're looking. Thank you.
I spoke last meeting, my name is Andrew Luciano, 195 Stonehenge Road. It's funny you say that about the public comment. I know you guys voted last meeting to limit the public comment from five minutes to three minutes, and then Mr. Montini had said that most public comments are three minutes. I'm asking you kind of to revisit that. Most public comments are three minutes, we don't need to move the time from five minutes to three minutes. I think that puts the board in a kind of a bad light, saying we don't want to hear from the public. If it's not, if most people will speak for five minutes anyways, then I don't, I don't see why we need to move it down. That's just a comment. Another point from last meeting, you know, the Human Resource Director had stated that 21 people in Nochtuck had left the district. And what I'm trying to figure out is, why don't you know why? I don't understand. I work in education, and I know sometimes we don't want to hear what people say when they're leaving, going out the door. I think it's important for the board to know why these teachers have left, because I'll bet you, I'll bet you some of that's teacher burn, I'll bet you some of it's teacher burn. So I would ask the board to look into exit activities, even a Google form, so you can kind of track some data on why these people are leaving. We might be losing really good teachers and really good staff members. The next thing is, I know you guys are picking a liaison school, you know, board members are picking a school. What I would advise you is not just to pick a school, but pick a classroom. Stay in that classroom for an hour at a time, and I know you guys are donating your time, but I think that's really important for you to see how teaching and learning is occurring within DaVinci. And I appreciate you guys giving the public time, and I know I spoke last time on the safety and the impact of learning within the district. We need to get a handle on some of these behaviors in our schools. It greatly impacts teaching and learning. Last time I suggested that you survey the teachers, because they're at the front lines, they are the front lines of what's going on within their classrooms. I would give a survey out to the teachers, coming from the board, not coming from central office, not coming from administration, but coming from the board, about really what's going on, anonymous survey inside their classrooms. Because if teachers don't feel comfortable, then teaching and learning is going to be impacted. And really, last thing, I really appreciate, I believe that safety and the impact of learning is on the agenda tonight. I don't know, I think it is. Because I know last time, a board member had stated that, thank you, and I would just hope that you guys spend as much time on that one agenda item as you did on oil contracts last time. Because if we don't, then we know where the district's priorities are. So again, thank you for letting us do this.
Thank you. If there's any other public comment, please step to the podium and state your name and address for the record.
Sharon Hedy Lebansky, 63 Hackett Street. I'm to pick Doug to piggyback off that safety. Usually, if you know me, I'm here to advocate for my own personal children and their education, and I'm really happy with how much my children have grown as learners and how much Nochtuck has changed. I feel like I can really see that being at the forefront of what's best practice in terms of teaching and learning is happening, and that you're investing materials for students, and I'm really proud of how my son has grown. He's in fifth grade now at Cross Street, and I have a kindergartener who's growing exponentially a hot girl, and I couldn't be more happy. Except, in recent times, I'm very emotional about the status of our public schools and the threat, and I think often, like I send my kids to school and it's supposed to be safe, and I'm like, question that, I'm scared. So I ask you to be proactive, not reactive, and you know, if we have a threat to be reactive, let's like really work together as a community to make this a priority, because yes, teaching and learning is a priority, and I know that you have everything lawyer's office in the world. But like now, I want to send my son to school, and I'm worried about middle school, and I have to like toy with other options that are weird, about like, I have to send him to a virtual high school, like, because it's safe. I know he grew as a learner during distance learning, at a time when like he was growing the most as a learner. So like, I'm really thinking about that, and I'm scared for the teachers that have to be put in that situation when lawsuits are being filed on their behalf because they don't really know, they're not taking a threat serious, and it's happening in my own district where there will be a threat, and that's just scary for kids and it's scary for parents. So I really hope that the Board of Education, as much time and effort that you put into making sure that our kids are learning, but that now, not only just health-wise that our kids are safe, but just like physically safe now at this point. So I'm begging you to like definitely make that a priority. Sorry, I'm very emotional, but thank you.
Thank you very much. And if anyone else has public comment, please step to the podium and state your name and address for the record.
Good evening, Dan Sheridan, 32, General Falcon Drive, my bat. A couple things, actually one thing. I want to comment about board policy, AB133, public comment. Last month, the board reduced the comment time from five to three minutes. This change is disgraceful, it's shameful, and just wrong. To review the history, there used to be two five-minute opportunities for public comment at the beginning and at the end of the meeting. Several years ago, the end of the meeting opportunity was dropped, and now the only opportunity is at the beginning of the meeting, and it's been reduced from five to three minutes. For reference, the Board of Education Emergency is the top legislative body in the county that has two public comment opportunities, both of which are five minutes, and it's rarely enforced. It hasn't been enforced for years, as far as I know, and I go to pretty much all the Board of Education emergency meetings. The board needs to respect and allow comments from the public, especially parents of taxpayers, even if Board of Education members don't like the message. Mrs. Makowski, who I don't see here today, and Mr. McCool ran on making the Board of Ed more open to stakeholder input. Mr. McCool voted against that motion to reduce the public comment, and ABC only wanted the Board of Education to do that. Mr. McCool, I applaud you for that, and hopefully you and your supporters can take it up to enhance public comment and influence of the Board of Ed moving forward. If you're not willing to listen to the stakeholders during public comment, perhaps you should not be on this board. I'm asking you to restore public comment to five minutes, restore the second public comment at the end of the meeting. That's all I'm going to say right now. Thank you.
Thank you. If anyone has any other public comment, please step to the podium and state your name and address for the record.
I'm Dorothy Ness Tounen, 48, Downland Court. I just want to say congratulations to our cross-country team for a job well done for their season, for their future. Congratulations to our football team for kicking in Sonia's butt. And also, I was reading that the City Hill and several other schools created the longest recycling paper chain with a message of love and hope, and I think that's a great, a great thing that they've done, so I want to say congratulations for that as well.
Thank you. If there's any other public comment, please step to the podium and state your name and address for the record. And I'll ask one more time for public comment. Seeing none, we'll move into the superintendent's report, and I'll turn it over to Superintendent Montini.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Chair. So we will start this evening, the superintendent's report, with a school climate, social, emotional learning presentation, followed up by a presentation from one of our schools. Great, so I will be joined today by Denise Tukuto, school counselor, by Nicole Reitner, our director of special services, and Mrs. Sweeney, our assistant superintendent. So the four of us will be sharing with you sort of an overview of social, emotional learning, school climate, and I will begin. So, we set out everything that we do in Nochtuck. And you haven't seen this graphic in a little bit, it used to be that it was found its way into each and every one of our presentations, guided by a set of core values and guiding principles. The safety of our schools, the safety of our students is our, is our first priority. Our decision-making is guided by the principals. We know that these four guiding principles are essential to our success, establishing strong relationships with our students, our faculty, our staff, our families, the health, wellness, wellness and safety for all, providing environments and working to provide an environment that is, that is suitable, safe, and policies and procedures that keep everybody safe, access and opportunity for all, for a district, the school district, for everyone, for each and everyone, for all, and access and opportunity and being an inclusive environment, that's who we are. And of course, we expect support, we have high expectations for each and every one of our community members, students, ourselves, our faculty, our staff, and we know that we expect great things and we provide support, that we are just capable of achieving amazing things, and our students have, and we continue to do that. So I'm going to talk a little bit about today, school climate, we're going to talk a little bit of today about social, emotional learning, and we're going to start with our current context, not as an excuse for what is going on, but our current context and reality. We're coming back to school after unfinished work, interruptions to labs, a missed pandemic, and currently another clarinet. So what we have is, we have some quotes on the left-hand side, one of which was from the Connecticut Mirror, the article that I sent you, in which we were recognized, or at least maybe recognized if the right word, but we certainly were cited in there, not for our work from the state of Connecticut in regards to some of our SEL strategies. So according to the Connecticut Mirror, children are seeking out mental health care more than ever, and influxes too showed up in crisis at either school or emergency rooms, departments, seek psychiatric care during the pandemic, and the trend continued as this new school year began. And then a pediatric study by JAMA, the pandemic may worsen existing mental health problems and lead more cases among children and adolescents because the unique combination of the public health crisis, social isolation, and the economic recession. And on the right-hand side, this past Tuesday, the Surgeon General, and that's the top is the headline from the LA Times, Surgeon General warns of emerging youth mental health crisis and a rare public advisement. And based on his, again, he released it Tuesday, within his advisory, the research stated symptoms of depression and anxiety have doubled during the pandemic, with 25% of youth experiencing depressive symptoms and 20% experiencing anxiety symptoms, increases in negative emotions and poor behavior such as impulsivity and irritability. And then the most important box, of course, is down the bottom, and again, this is a quote from the Surgeon General, mental health challenges in children, adolescents and young adults are real and they're widespread, but most importantly, they're treatable and often preventable. So again, I share this with you just as a reminder that of our current context and what we're experiencing in our schools to provide the lens through which we'll engage in the next few slides. So, we wrote our plan as we came back to school and re-acclimating to hopefully what will be normalcy at some point. And from our plan, we wrote and are committed to, despite the unique circumstances of the pandemic, our mission and vision as a, vision as a school district remains the same, to ensure that each and every student and each and every class develops into the digital graduate through engagement and rigorous academic experiences with SEL support, care, and guidance. As a part of our return to school plan, every school in Nochtuck has established strategic plans focused on academic excellence, culture and climate, systems for student success and talent development. So it might have been easy to craft those words, but it's not, it's not an easy task, and we fight ourselves in challenging times, but we are committed and we are resilient. And on the right-hand side, you'll see some bullets, all of our schools have district and school strategic plans. We, the assistant superintendent and I have weekly visits, as you know, we spend the entire Tuesday in schools, half a day in each school. We, this past Tuesday, we were in classrooms for at least three hours, the majority of our visit was spent in classroom, and we're there so that we can support, we can see what's going on, we can ask questions, we can reallocate resources if needed. And really, it's been, it's the best part of our day, the best part of our week, Tuesday is the best day of the week, because we're in schools seeing the great things that are being accomplished by our, in our schools. Every school has a school-based team to connect families and children, to assist them with strategies to support their success. And we anticipated, had hired some additional staff at the beginning of the year, and then I would say more in a full-ish, but as we continue, we continue to be fluid and reorganize based on need, and we've added some additional staff. So, we added a school psychologist who split between Andrew and, it's a full-time position, but it's Andrew and Western gain point five. We added a social worker that serves his early childhood, and we have a cross-street split. We did that as part of last year's budget process, and that now provides for a full-time social worker or psychologist in each of our schools. So that was really important. We hired several class-sized teachers so that we were able to decrease class sizes. Now, we can't decrease every class size in every single school, we'd love to be able to double, or we would need twice as many buildings, et cetera, but we did that strategically with you in, so that we can maintain spacing, so that we can stay, provide the best chance of staying in school and meet the needs of individuals, so we had a focus there. In, after September, in October, you were also been informed, we added security at the middle school and high school level, because we realized that our schools were busy, and that some of the, some of the data points from the Surgeon General's advisory, which we certainly were seeing in our schools, that is our reality. And I think that as school, as our students came back, it really is, it's a K-12 thing, I think we see more, we were seeing more sort of, I mean, we would call traditional disciplinary behaviors in the upper grades, but we have more elopement, walking out of class, we have more, more students not potty training on the heels of the pandemic. So we are, we have increased need, and that's the context that I'm trying to paint for you. And so, we added security at the middle and high school, and are adding it, sometimes, you know, hiring does take a little bit. We have SRO middle school, it's not a true SRO, but it is a police officer there, so it's not the same person, but we have added that at the middle school, at least for now, we're committed to doing that, and then we'll, we'll see what happens at during budget time in regard to the longevity of that. And then we also brought back, are bringing back right now, bathroom and hall monitors at our high school. So what these things allow us to do is, when we create our visibility plans in terms of hallways and supervision, that frees up others at the high school, we have a bathroom and monitors, it frees up other folks to be able to add layers of security and supervision in other places. So that's our additional staff. I'm going to talk a little bit about this, but before I do, I don't intend to say that we're only doing things as a result of the pandemic. We've been doing things like holding students accountable and enforcing board policies in regards to student discipline forever. We've been focused on social, emotional learning forever. It's not, it's, we've always wanted students to grow into productive members of society, where they're emotionally healthy, where they can have conversations and engage with other folks. We're simply trying to tell you that the needs are exacerbated by the pandemic, that's all. So SEL has been around forever, our focus, and you'll hear from a lot of what we've been doing is, is through Project Aware, that's what we were cited for in that article, that, we were doing that pre-pandemic as well. So what you'll see here, and it's a little deceiving, you have to really look closely, this is a five-year history of disciplined data in our schools, it's what we report on a monthly basis as part of our alliance grant we need with the state. You'll see that, so already to the left, we have 96 year-to-date, through the end of 96 in-school suspensions year-to-date, through November 30th, 2021. Last year, we only had 66, then this was a much different year with hybrid schedules, distance learning, et cetera. The year before was also cut short in March from the pandemic. So if you go back to 1819, which was a little bit of a spike year, and you go back to 1718, there's your basis of comparison for at least two quote-unquote more normal years. And you'll see that from in-school suspension, we are likely trending a little down as compared to those two other years. If you go to the next slide, this is the matrix that we supply to the, to our State Department, at least our liaison who meets with us, our partner who meets with us quarterly. And then you'll see as we track it, we're projecting in 21, 22 to be down in in-school suspensions slightly, but we'll see what each month has in store. And now you'll see the out-of-school suspensions, and we're trending up when we look at out-of-school suspensions. So we have that, 112 out-of-school suspensions in our first three months of school, last year 57, in the context of the most unusual year of last year of our varied learning models. 1920, the year cut short, was 174, and then 18, 19, and you can see in 1718 where one was nearly 300 at 293, and one was low at 200. Right, so we're trending higher for out-of-school suspensions. And I'm sharing the high-level data with you, what I, what's important for me to communicate with you, and I know that we've had this conversation previously, is that we dig into the data all the time, we're looking for, well, what's the catalyst for the behavior? What's the antecedent? When did it take place? Where? What are the patterns? Who are we talking about? How can we better support this child? How can we extinguish the behavior? How can we extinguish the behavior? Consequences are one thing. We enforce policies of the Board of Education and hold students accountable for their behavior. Yes, we do. But it's not the, if that's the only thing that we do, we're not going to, we're not going to change behavior. So that's why today, we're also talking about supportive discipline, other things that we do to restore and to teach. Teach. It's important that we learn to teach, that we teach students appropriate, appropriate behavior, strategies, et cetera. So you'll see on the out-of-school, we're trending up. So that's out-of-school, we're trending up, more egregious behaviors. You'll see we have 36 in the first month, 50 in the second, and 26 in November. We have the same thing for expulsions. Expulsions are harder to predict. Right now, we're trending a little higher on expulsions. Sometimes you have an event in one month that involves another, that a group of students or something in it. It kind of throws the trend or the prediction out of sync. In my years as assistants, I think we are, low teens was the highest. So we have anywhere from just a few sub-years to 13 or 14. But right now, we've, well, we're at four through November. So enforcing consequences, and in-school and out-of-school suspensions are only some of the ways in which we hold students accountable from a, from a disciplinary, right? Other things such as loss of, you know, loss of privilege and denial of opportunity and earning things and lower-level offenses, classroom-level offenses, school-level offenses. All of those things are analyzed. But at the same time, we have to support students and help them understand and learn, which is why we have social emotional learning and strategies for mental health as well under current context. And that's what you're going to hear for in a few minutes as I turn it over to Ms. Brinkhardt. She's going to get into more of the, we're going to get more into the social emotional learning and our teaching aspect of improving school climate.
Yes. So you've heard from us since 2018 when we started being a Project Aware district about all of the things that we're doing associated with Project Aware. So you can see our goals listed there, and Mrs. Tofuto is going to go more into our work specific to these goals. But we're one of three districts in Connecticut that are Project Aware districts. It's us, Middletown, and Windham. We've been very fortunate to have them as partners. And you can see from our goals that really it's about, all of these goals are about improving our collaboration and relationships with the State Department of Education and other agencies such as Youth Services, our preschool programs, the Department of Children and Families. And then also for us to be able to identify students who are struggling socially, emotionally, and behaviorally for whatever reason, for our teachers and support staff to have the skills and knowledge to respond to that based on what the student needs. And then for us to collect data and really make sure that what we're doing for students is actually having an outcome on their social emotional well-being and on their behavior. So we started this project aware since 2018, as Superintendent Montini said, before the pandemic. And we were actually situated in a much better place than many of our colleagues in other districts who are calling us and asking us for help because we had so many systems in place. We have many more systems to get into place and many more things to do. But we were off to a good start to be able to respond to our students' needs. So Mr. Tofuto is going to talk more about that.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for having me. The first thing I'm going to talk about is the DESA assessment. So the DESA assessment we started three years ago. It's a student strength assessment that looks for student strength in the areas of the social emotional learning competencies that are listed on the slide. The way that we use the information is each school has a team that looks through the data that's provided through the assessment and looks globally at how we can address student need at the tier-one level, but also a little bit more focused on individual or groups of students that might need some support in the SEL competencies. We then either deliver classroom lessons or push in, our support staff pushes in to do classroom lessons, or we pull students out into small groups and deliver evidence-based interventions for the students based on their area of need, which is what the DESA tells us. It'll narrow it down to each competency. It's given three times a year, so we already did our fall assessment. We'll do it again in February-ish and then in May so that we can do some progress monitoring and look at the end of the year what the growth was. We've seen some really good growth in the past two years where we've used this as our baseline. So I'm hopeful that that'll continue to turn that way. These are some of the strategies we're using in terms of intervention and tier-one support for our students. Like I said, our support staff often pushes into the classroom to deliver lessons on being kind, being responsible citizens, being aware of how to manage your emotions. There's a lot of mindfulness throughout our district. And Ruler, as you know, is our universal curriculum that we're using. Ruler stands for recognizing, understanding, labeling, expressing, and regulating your emotion. These are some specific small-group instructional practices that we're using. So the first one, to bounce back from DVT program, is a group counseling curriculum that is, has a very strong focus on students that are experiencing symptoms from trauma. So that, this is our third year using that as well. And again, the data shows that we've seen some significant improvement in students' symptomology from trauma. And then the DVT is new. We're just, tomorrow's actually the last day of training for our last cohort. Our social workers, psychologists, and school counselors are being trained in this mode of therapy for students. And this has a lot of research and evidence behind it. So I'm very hopeful that this will be a great asset to our kids as well. This is just a little grid for you to kind of see how we're implementing community partnerships to support mental health for our students. So between Stokes, Wellmore, and CMHA, we are putting personnel from each of those agencies in numerous schools so that they can engage in group counseling, individual counseling, supporting students transitioning from extended absences, whether it's through quarantine or suspension or hospitalization. But that's been a really nice asset. And this is a very slow rollout plan because we wanted to make sure that we were doing it very carefully and strategically. So we started small and we're rolling out as time goes on so we can work out the kinks before we go full district-wide.
One of the things, if I can just interject, if you read the Surgeon General's advisory, it's really a call to action for a lot of different agencies, healthcare, community service organizations, schools, to come together because no one, no one individual group is going to be able to combat it in isolation. So earlier I spoke about we added some staff. So we've added our own FTEs, and we've also added partners into our buildings, to community partnerships to strengthen and provide the additional supports to families, some of which are wraparound services, which means we hook them up with an individual per se in our school, and then that's able to carry over outside of school. So it's not just a, not that we're nine-to-five, but an eight-to-three, or that's, it doesn't stop there. We're looking forward and supporting and connecting with, you know, services that will help students and families beyond our, the six-and-a-half hours they spend with us.
And then upcoming in the spring, we are going to be using Joe Grummer's Building a Trauma and Form Restorative School book. This training that we're going to be receiving focuses on mindset, language, practice, and environment. So this is really our, our classroom teachers are our first responders, for lack of a better term. They are the people that are with our students for the majority of their time. They're the people who are managing the classroom behaviors, identifying when a student's struggling. And so it's really our classroom teachers and administrator who are going to be leading these teams. So we'll have teams in every school, and then they'll be trained and prepared to roll out for next school year. As Superintendent Montini said, it's important to hold students accountable, but it's also important to restore. It's important to teach our students how to, you know, make it right and how to really be regulated and managing their emotions in the classroom. So we're excited about that coming.
Those things, I mean, they take time, right? Changing behavior takes time. We try to change their own behaviors, or that sometimes even works. But sometimes it takes very mixed approaches. We're committed to that. We're committed, obviously, providing an exemplary amazing learning experience for our kids and environment in which to do so.
So I get, I have the pleasure of speaking to family partnerships. We, Nagatuck is highly committed, passionately committed to partnering with our families, not just because of what the research tells us about partnering with our families, but because we know firsthand that our children will have positive experiences in school when we have a collective effort to helping our children succeed. So we, it's been a little bit more of a challenge in that we've had some restrictions. And this year, some of those restrictions, we've been able to allow to have families enter our buildings, and we know it's important for us to be strategic about that. So one way was through parent conferences that we're trying to be able to partner with families in different ways as we were able to offer in-person, virtual, or telephonic conferences and increase the percent of parents who are able to access that opportunity. We also are implementing a guiding partnerships with Schools platform, which is an online platform that allows us to survey our families around family engagement specifically. And then that platform gives us some solid strategies that we can use to inform future planning for engagement opportunities. In addition to that, our schools in their strategic plans and in our district plan are planning minimally for early events in each of their buildings. And here are some examples in some of our buildings. It's happening even more regularly than quarterly. I know for my own daughter, I've been to three different family events. And some examples in various schools are offering escape rooms. There's different grade-level events where parents come to do a poetry activity or see a parade with their student. We're having schools offer a second cup of coffees with families, fall family festivals, family forums, a FAFSA night at our high school, and a winter arts showcase, and many, many more. Those are just a few examples. We also know how important it is to focus on SEL strategies and school climate with our adults and our staff. So we understand the impact that that has on our students. And I started with school staff charters in Ruler because the first year of implementation of Ruler, it's focused on building the capacity of our staff and them accessing the strategies before they begin rolling it out in their classrooms with students. And our, our, our schools are doing a lot of amazing opportunities to build the climate, such as contests. So there's an example, I could have listed probably 50 here, by the way. Contest, the first to share self-care strategy wins a gift card. Lots of staff shout-outs, snack cards, team-building opportunities. We had some schools doing some homemade pasta or painting activity, and a lot of games. Wellness Wednesday activities, Orange and Latice Friday treats, gratitude drawings. And at our high school, a very long-lasting spoon game that many of you may have seen, folks out in the community with spoons in their hands, I certainly have.
So I was trying to watch to see if I, what do I, I interject? Notice how I don't really follow all of our predetermined rules and I just keep jumping in. I don't think, if you, I want you to think for a minute about the paint faces from Tiffany Higgin's paintings of the healthcare workers. We know that it's hard in certain sectors. Education, it's really hard right now for teachers, and they're doing an amazing job. It's hard for principals, and they're doing an amazing job. People are leaving the medical field and the education. There was an article already over the summer, USA Today over the summer, they did a survey where 25% of the folks, you know, were thinking of leaving their profession because they're doing things that they've never done before in a really difficult context. And believe what we want in regards to the pandemic, the merits of the pandemic and how it's handled. It's, it's hard for folks. It's hard to operate now, it's hard to transition to virtual. To be in a classroom with maybe students after a year of them not having some of what they had in regards to structure. So there's not a day that goes by where I'm out in my car driving to work, thinking about the teachers and the good work that our teachers are doing to our students every single day. And if you're here, you probably have a teacher here from Nagatuck, or many, that you're thinking about, and you're appreciating. So we are cognizant and intentional about trying to prevent teachers from running home. I think that's easier said than done in the moment now, which is why we're seeing people leave sectors. We're seeing people leave all kinds of jobs in this great reservation, maybe. I don't fully understand that, but I do know reports on vacancies and having to fill things in the education field, not just in Nagatuck, but throughout the state and beyond. And that's real. That's real. Because it's hard. And we're taking care of folks, and we're so appreciative of the work that they do every day. One of those things where when I try to thank them and try to, but then, you know, you want to be sincere. So I'm sharing it with you because we are sincere. They do an amazing job, and I'm proud of their work. I remember, it's not easy work. We're going to keep getting better and better. Every single day, we're going to respond and react to to any obstacle, pandemic or otherwise related. So this is one thing that we're doing to reinforce with our staff SEL strategies and take care of our people who take care of our kids, our most valuable and precious resources. Sorry.
Okay, thank you, appreciate it. And to close, you see here some language that was on the first slide when Mr. Montini opened this particular presentation. And he actually, which he rarely does, read this word-for-word. And I would actually like to do the same because it speaks to our, our vision and our mission and our purpose. And that is, and this language can also be found in our return to school plan. Despite the unique circumstances of the pandemic, our mission and vision as a school district remains the same. And that is to ensure that each and every student in each and every class develops into the vision of the graduate. And they will do that through engagement in rigorous academic experiences with social and emotional support, care, and guidance. Except for this amazing picture. Thank you, Lorraine. This is a beautiful picture. collage.
Listen, this, I'm going to hear from, transition in a minute to hear from Principal Mezzo and Assistant Principal Dr. Witten from City Hill who will present on their strategic plan, much of which we provided sort of an umbrella of what's going on in districts, throughout the district. Really, it's school, it's school-specific information that they can provide to you. But I can assure you that the well-being of our students, the whole child, right? That's important, both academic, social, emotional, safety, all of that. And we're not going to stop looking until we have a system that provides for an exceptional experience for each and every student. So if there's any questions related to the district-wide presentation, I'm happy to take them to the board, or we can also wait until Secretary City Hill can answer them.
Can I ask one now?
Of course, yes.
When you were talking about family events, what's the escape room?
So I, we can talk about the escape room. We might be stealing a little fun there, but we should do it because that was really fun. We have people there that can talk about it. I don't mind, I don't give a tenth of that. And so we'll answer the question. I think, I was thinking of a February presentation on family engagement that we would dive deeper. But Mr. McCall, did you attend?
I did attend. The escape room I attended was at Hafrock. We socially distanced, but went into a classroom where we were given a packet. And the goal of that pack was to finish the puzzle, to get out of the room. And, you know, age-appropriate, so kids that were in third grade got different activities than kids that were kindergarten, even though sometimes your families were kept together, so they went in the same room. so they were in the same room. And it was a great experience that challenged the minds of our students, but also got their parents involved. It felt warm and welcoming. There were treats at the end. It was a really good time. I'd really like to see more and more of those activities.
So can I ask, did I attend it?
I was going to have the principal stand up.
Oh, sorry.
We're going to do that. She's going to stay after you come.
And so the, the activities had a lot of math themes, approaches, but they were really fun and silly and they had to solve clues and then, and sometimes look under their chair for a component. And they got markers with little black lights to solve the problem. And you were working as a family to be able to escape the room. And so our particular favorite was one activity that had a text message from Mrs. Taylor. My daughter thought that was hilarious and we had to solve a, a problem using the emojis that she had written in her text message to us.
Thank you. I think one of the schools did a similar event, but they held it at Big Y. Families got together and they were given, almost like a scavenger hunt.
Yes.
And also puzzles and what, right. And that was fun.
And I think Mrs. Mezzo had one. She's planning. Oh, yeah. We actually were having, you start moving over, right?
Yes, first, you have to give away, Cathy, who can stay in the room. So yeah, Mrs. Mezzo, please, Mr. Juwitzik.
Okay, sure. So our family engagement, I'm Irene Mezzo, nice to see everybody. Our family engagement that we are going to expand this year, we bought gift cards to all the local businesses. And then we had our families run around to the different businesses, solve a clue that was inside the window shop and then use the gift card to, to help out local businesses during the pandemic. So that was kind of fun and we're going to do that again this year, but we're going to make it a little more theatrical. We're going to all meet in a certain place and have a time limit. So I think that'll be fun. So I guess we can begin our presentation. I'm really excited to be here because the climate, safe and orderly, has been on my mind every single day since last year and it continues to be extremely important to me. I will only be speaking in terms of our strategic plan on safe and orderly climate because that's what's most pressing on the community's mind right now. However, I did provide a folder for you of our strategic, our strategic plan is on the left-hand side, some data for you to look at, our theory of action that is really around learning, accelerated learning model. And then on the right-hand side, I just provided you with a quick glance of how I communicate weekly to families, how I communicate weekly to staff. I provide daily shout-outs and those are some samples in there as well as a coupon if you want to visit our Cyclone Cafe for a free coffee. So you're welcome to come on Fridays. That opens up next Friday and we would love to have the board come and get a free coffee and a treat. You'll also notice that you have stress balls. I think Mrs. Malone was thinking of me as principal at a middle school at this time and she created stress balls for all of our teachers and she wanted you to have one as well. And we can just go to the next slide. My stress ball is extremely large. Thank you, Mrs. Malone. I appreciate that. So this evening, our hope is to walk you through our, the process, the timeline and process for creating and implementing our theory of action to address climate and accelerated learning goals. We're going to highlight our strategic plan with that focus on culture and climate. And then we're going to talk a little bit about our student focus groups. We have a variety of student, student focus groups so that we can constantly hear from, from our students. We can go right to the next slide. So we began anticipating the return to school last year, all of last year. We knew that coming back in the building after not being in the building for so long would be some heavy lifting and that would be involving all of us, the administrative team, our support staff and certainly our teachers. If we think about it in terms of the last normal school year, our students this year are in grade seven. The last time they had a normal school year was grade four. So my own son came from grade four last year and he had one teacher, one teacher. And now we've plucked that group potentially into a class where there's many teachers, many transitions, much more academic expectations. So we, we have to have an understanding of that. We have to be sensitive to that and plan for it. So we began the last day of school last year and then all summer long. My teachers are fantastic. They come in on a voluntary basis, only if they want to, just to hear what's happening because a lot of my teachers want to hit the ground running when they start the year. So I open up, open invitations and I do those Thursday mornings and I use their input and I listen to what they have to say. They give me suggestions. We tweak it so that by the time we roll out the plan, they already feel invested and included because I think that many heads are much better when we're drafting something. We continue the work all year at monthly faculty meetings. We devoted November 2nd to address climate and culture and we've had two faculty meetings in a row in December. I'm asking them, what's working? What's not working? What are your suggestions? What's your input? We took some time yesterday to revisit our charter. How do we want to feel as adults in our school? What are we going to commit to do so that we can all feel that way? So that's tied directly into our SEL work, but it's also really important to ensure that we're all in this together and that we're making sure that we have a safe and positive climate. If we think about the components of a safe and positive climate, safe and orderly is at the top. Equally important, I don't know if we can say that there's any, if these are in hierarchy order, but they're all really working in concert to create a safe and positive climate. So relationships are extremely important, adult to adult, student to adult and student to student. Teaching and learning is exceptionally important. And then the institutional environment. And we're going to go through this presentation, we kind of highlight what we've done in those areas. At this point, I'm going to introduce Mr. Juwitzik, our assistant principal, and he's going to, we're going to tag team the rest of the presentation.
Good evening, everybody. It's nice to see you and thank you so much for the opportunity to speak with you this evening about the measures that we are taking to create and sustain a safe and positive climate at City Hill. Very important to us, our priority every single day, as Mrs. Mezzo said, it's something that's on our mind every single day, is ensuring that our students and our staff are physically safe. And that starts with supervision and creating a safe and orderly environment. We are all hands on deck for supervision. We have our staff in the hallways during times of transition, the administrators, the security, our support staff are visible throughout the entire day, walking the halls, popping into classrooms. We have, we are in the process of hiring an additional security officer to assist and we are extremely grateful for the police officer in our building every day to assist with that visibility, but also as another adult to create connections with students in the hallways. One system that we implemented this year were our hallway sweeps. We always want to make sure that students are where they're supposed to be, when they are supposed to be there in order to maximize their time in class and ultimately maximize learning and help create order within our school. So for our hallway sweeps, we will announce we're conducting a sweep. Teachers will close their doors and students who are in the hallway without a pass, we will keep track of who's not in class when they're supposed to be there and hold them accountable, but also work with them on their problem solving and what we can work together on in order to sustain in class for the entire period when they are supposed to be there. We have implemented a school-wide pass, which are given out to all students in the building daily. Students are allowed to leave three times throughout the day. That gets signed off by the teacher. But what I really love about our school-wide pass is that each period of the day, students are prompted to check in on our mood meter to see how they're doing emotionally, to recognize their emotions. And on the back of our pass, you see different strategies that, that they can utilize to regulate their emotions. And then something else we're extremely grateful for is our collaboration with our outside agencies, Nagatuck Youth Services, Nagatuck Police Department, Wellmore, Stokes, in order to ensure that students' needs are being met outside of the school building so that they can be more successful and contribute to a safe and orderly climate within our school building. We have our ROPS expectations for students, respect, organization, cooperation, kindness and safety. Every single one of those is something that we take very seriously, especially the physical safety. And I know Mrs. Mezzo wanted me to point out how she was matching with Indy earlier.
The police dog. Had the kerchief that matched my story. And I made the dog take a picture with me. I'm like, oh, this is fantastic.
Next slide, please. So equally as important as our students and staff feeling physically safe, their emotional safety is just as much of a priority to us. And at the center of everything we do in education, it's grounded in positive relationships where students feel connected to one another, students feel connected to the adults in their building and the adults feel supported in having positive relationships with us and with our students. So we are constantly looking at ways to develop and strengthen those relationships for our students and staff. Something we are currently working on, which we're hoping to launch in January, is the development of a mentoring program. We know that students are most successful when they have at least one trusted adult in the building that they can go to if there's ever anything they need or somebody to confide in. So ultimately, our long-term vision is every single student being able to say, yes, I feel extremely connected to every, to at least one adult in the building. And we have a committee of teachers right now in collaboration with youth services to develop that mentoring program.
If I can interject there too, except for that is we at the district level are partnering with them. So it's going to be middle school, but it's also going to be 712. That was omitted from the district presentation, but partnering with youth services and mentors.
Additionally, we're constantly integrating SEL strategies in our classrooms. Up there, you can see an example of a class charter, which at the beginning of the year, our staff and each one of our teachers collaborates with their students to identify how they want to feel and what they're going to commit to, to ensure that everybody feels that way. And it's something that we reflect upon and revisit throughout the year. Upcoming, we have our staff and students in each homeroom participating in a door decorating contest for the holidays in which their door decorating contest must be reflective of their class charter. And then something that we really want for our students, we want them to feel connected to one another. We want them to feel celebrated, celebrate their accomplishments and really enjoy the full middle school experience. And something that we do for that are our town hall assemblies and our activity days where we shout out our students who are meeting and exceeding our ROPS expectations and also give them time to participate in some enjoyable activities to connect with one another and their teachers in a different light out of the classroom. Every middle school student loves getting up on stage against their math teacher in a minute to win a challenge with the Oreo cookie on their forehead and they have to get it into their mouth without using their hands. It's something that every single student really can't wait to get on stage to do. So that's one of those opportunities where we try to build into our schedule in order to provide students with as many of those activities as possible to really strengthen their relationships and their connectedness to each other and to the adults.
I'll just pick up at the end here, restorative practices. I know we, we are talking about it a lot, but I wanted to give two examples of restorative practices so that you could see it in action. We have had some students who've had some bus referrals and yes, I can give them a consequence for that, but what we thought would really help the bus behavior to decrease is if we took some of those students and engaged them in throwing a party, a bus appreciation day party, which is coming next week. The kids are super excited about it and I think the opportunity to sit with their bus driver, serve them, get them a juice will go a long way to build those relationships and see one another in another light. Our, our bus drivers have a tough job. They're trying to navigate traffic, which is hard enough for me as it is, without a busload of students. So we want to show that humanity. We also had some of our students redecorating the bathroom and making sure that it was a safe and welcoming place. They hung different decorations. They found, one of the teachers, Mrs. Larekis, found an old dresser. She stacked it with different toiletries. They had like lotions and soaps and now students go there and feel pride in their bathroom and don't want to engage in some of the, you know, silly vandalism that they were seeing on the TikTok. So those are, those are just two examples of what we're always trying to do so that we can kind of turn the, turn the switch. You, you cannot consequence a behavior out of a student. You have to teach them and you have to get them to see why it's important not, not to engage in that behavior. Handing out a consequence is quick and easy. These restorative practices take time, but they pay off for life. And I feel really good about the direction that we're headed. It's just slow going and I see it every day. Every day I feel better about our students, the relationships we're creating and I'm seeing the behavior go down. So that's exciting news and we can go to the next one. The most important thing I think sometimes that I do is to support the faculty and staff who are the boots on the ground in the classroom. So I have an open door policy. They, our faculty know that they can talk with either Mr. Juwitzik or myself if they need a minute, if they need to step out of a class for a minute and just take a breath, they know that they, they can do that. And then I am constantly thinking of ways with Mr. Juwitzik to recognize them and appreciate them. We had a spider game. So if I ran around and put little spiders all over the building, if you found a spider, you had to grab a spider, a web of positivity slip and give it to another colleague and then you and that colleague got a treat in your mailbox. And then it just kept going. We were passing them around and that kind of thing makes people feel good. Right now, we're in the middle of the 12 days of wellness. So every day we have something else to take care of, not just faculty, but also students and, and just see what we can do to help them mind, body and spirit. As Mr. Montini said it best, this is a really tough time for educators. And so I feel really responsible for showing them how much I appreciate and care for them and letting them know that we're all in this together. Can we go to the next one? Teaching and learning still continues to be the most important thing to make. A well-designed lesson and a highly engaging and quality task is going to distract students from having any behavior problems. When they're excited about what they're doing, they're in class, they're not looking to get out of class. So that continues to be a focus of mine. This year, we are excited to put something in play that seems to be really having nice benefits. The first period of the day, it's not really a full period. It used to be our homeroom and we kind of turned that into something called W, what I need. Every student is going off to do something that is customized for them. It may be that they are in the classroom and they are engaged in simulated activity for science. And then later, they're going to be able to have a better understanding of that science concept when they get to class or they're watching a video to build background knowledge. They might be working on iReady, but it's really, the essence of this is that everybody can achieve at high levels. Sometimes some need a head start. So rather than think about remedying, remediating students after the whole class, we try to get a head start. Give them a math lesson. Some of our students get a math lesson first, then they go in again and they see it again and they feel confident about it because they are seeing it for the second time. So we really try to differentiate our, our second period lack of math and our second block of language arts so that everybody gets what they need. And give, we look to give them just-in-time supports and scaffolds. So again, we can keep the expectations high, we just need to change the way we're doing things. So we have found that that has paid off in our math scores in the past, pre-pandemic. We saw some really nice growth and we are going to continue in our other subjects as well.
So in addition to teaching and learning for our students, we also want to make sure that we are developing our staff capacity, not only in the areas of accelerated learning, but also in shifting our mindset for how we respond to student behaviors in the classroom. And you see a couple of examples of some resources that we've used for professional development this year, one being trauma-informed classrooms. We know that we do have students who have experienced some adverse childhood experiences and then sometimes that presents with trauma. So how do we plan to prevent those behaviors from escalating and when they do, how do we respond to de-escalate as quickly as possible? We're also using a lot of work from Ross Green in his book Lost at School, in which we believe that when a student is exhibiting an undesirable behavior, it is because of a lagging skill or an unsolved problem that that student has. And that work revolves around identifying what is that difficulty using the assessment of lagging skills and unsolved problems to identify what that is, but not just solving it on our own, using our most valuable resource to solve that problem. That's the student who's exhibiting that behavior. So we try to utilize an approach called collaborative proactive solutions in which we bring that student in, the teacher brings that student in and says, hey, I noticed you're having difficulty with this. What's going on? How can I help? And together they come up with a plan. And then finally, that last resource from Discipline Win, we use for our professional development on November 2nd. It's about identifying the root cause of the behavior. And it starts, you could see the example of an action plan that a group of staff members put together. What is the problem behavior that they are seeing on their team? And it was elopement, students leaving the classroom. And it's brainstorming as many reasons why, why are we, why are we seeing this behavior? And then coming up with as many reasons as we can to identify the root cause and then turning that into action steps for how we can solve that problem. and then turning that into action steps for how we can solve that problem in order, by if-then statements in order to reduce the frequency of that behavior that's being exhibited.
Another, and final sort of piece of the puzzle is just looking at the institutional environment. So it might be as simple as if kids are chaotic in the hall, you just put a piece of duct tape out in the hall. And now you're just telling them, okay, everybody, let's just get our toes on the tape. That's all. And that's just easy. We're lining up and we don't always need to do something like this. We never needed to teach our kids how to line up in the hall so much before, but we're having, I think some of our students are finding it overwhelming to be in a school with so many other kids. So we're just putting these little scaffolds in place and we're finding it's, it's like magic. It works really nicely. Another thing that we want to did, or we did do this year was change our morning arrival and afternoon dismissal procedures. We noticed that there were a great deal of students on the patio and it seemed to be problematic. So we moved that around. We also noticed that our students were having a hard time staying in one, one class all the time. That was never something we had done, but, but because of COVID restrictions, we had everybody in the same class. So we decided to change that around as well. And then lastly, it's about having personnel in the right place at the right time. Making, if this is a hotspot for students to gather, then we just put a friendly face there and we, we say hello to them and we move them back to class. So those little things, they are, they go a long way. In a large school, the most important thing is that I can communicate effectively to all of the staff and that Mr. Jay also can make sure that whatever we're noticing during the day gets out and delivered. So we have a weekly brief. The weekly brief goes out to our faculty, that goes out every Sunday. That weekly brief is in your folder and I spend a lot of time doing shout-outs so that the expectations, whatever I'm looking for, I can acknowledge that who is doing that well. And so that our, it's really twofold. It's acknowledging what I want to see, but it's also letting the staff know who is a resource, who's already doing this work so they can approach them and collaborate. And then I also send out a weekly snapshot for families and that goes out Friday or Saturday. In addition to that, I do daily announcements and memos for the faculty just to gear up. I might do a Throwback Thursday or a Why Not Wednesday. Sometimes it's Motivating Monday. And that communication tool is what we need for that day. It's whatever I noticed the day before in terms of safe and orderly or in terms of epidemic, it's something that I want to emphasize. In addition to that, our students have a live news show each day. It's a student news crew that you can see featured at the bottom there. They deliver the announcements each day. Any student who is interested in being part of the news crew can certainly try to do that. And then lastly, we started in August with forums for parents. We've had opportunities for our remote learners to come into our school and meet with me and talk with me a little bit about what, what they had in terms of concerns for remote. And then based on our climate and culture, we had a lot of behavior problems in October. So I held two back-to-back forums partnering with our community agencies to address some of the things that we were seeing. Parents were concerned and I wanted to give them an opportunity to tell me directly what they were concerned about and to do what I could to reassure them, but also take some of their input and suggestions. We have another one planned for January 6th. We also hear from students all the time. So we have a, a leadership group, a racial activist group, a GSA, a principal's advisory, and now we've added a BOE liaison. We do same format that we use with parents and with staff, what's working, what needs improvement and what, what would you like to see added to our day? And we take those suggestions and we put them into play.
And then finally, anytime we're in a school, we're always looking to seek opportunities for growth, for improvement. And as Mrs. Mezzo said, we are seeing our students progress each day and our staff progress each day. In the month of November, our office referral system, we saw that 90% of our students met our behavioral expectations and we rewarded them with an opportunity for some time with their peers for a monthly social where they have to enjoy some ice cream, listen to some music and just hang out and be kids. According to our school climate survey data, back in October, we looked at neutral and favorable responses. Obviously, we seek 100% extremely favorable in every single area. We had about 88% of students respond to having a pleasant and emotional classroom climate. Though over 88% responded neutral, neutrally and favorably to students in school being welcoming and friendly. And then 95.6% of students responding neutrally, neutrally and favorably to students feeling cared for by their teachers. So I think that last part really speaks to what our teachers are doing to foster a nurturing and caring classroom climate.
And then I have always subscribed to this belief that optimism is something that can overcome even the most challenging times. And I think that a realistic optimism, you know, it can't be a rosy, everything is great. But recognizing that you have the power to make a change is really powerful. And I just really liked this quote, not far from where I live in a place called Death Valley. Death Valley is the hottest, driest place in America and nothing grows there. Nothing grows there because it doesn't rain. Hence Death Valley. In the winter of 2004, it rained in Death Valley. Seven inches of rain fell over a very short period. And in the spring of 2005, there was a phenomenon. The whole floor of Death Valley was carpeted in flowers for a while. And what it proved is this, that Death Valley isn't dead, it's dormant. Right beneath the surface are these seeds of possibility waiting for the right conditions to come about and with organic systems. If the conditions are right, life is inevitable. It happens all the time. You take an area, a school, and you change the condition. You give people a different sense of possibility, a different set of expectations, a broader range of opportunities. You cherish and value the relationships between teachers and learners. You offer people the discretion to be creative and to innovate in what they do and schools that were once bereft spring to life. So I really liken our, our school as we come back to, I don't want to call it Death Valley, but we have so much work to do. But I do think that with the right nurturing, we can, we can be back where we were. And I feel really confident in that. And that is it. Questions? Yeah.
Before your school town meetings, are those mostly activities on the stage? Or do you bring up issues and the students have a chance to respond or?
We have a little of everything. So some days it's just straightforward. We did do a spotlight on equity where we allowed students to plan that. We also just had one that was focused on veterans and the veterans had a panel. So sometimes informative, sometimes some fun. There's always fun mixed in regardless, but we have different sort of maybe themes or, or agendas.
But I mean, could the students raise their hands and voice an opinion or anything like, oh, okay.
Yes. Well, for the, for some of them they can, they're interactive. But I, I do like that idea with our teams because they do come down one team at a time. And I think that could be really powerful. Yeah, like a real town hall. Yeah.
You said you had a parent forum, two in the last month, which I thank you for because the last meeting here, I was concerned at the amount of parents who talked out about the climate going on in our schools. Can you share with us some of the feedback you got from that forum?
Yes, yes. So we, well, the first one that I did was not as well attended. It was partnering, it was on, we did three different subjects. We did social media and the dangers of that. We talked about vaping and then we had mental resources in the community. So that was one where parents could kind of choose to go to all three or two. Then the next one, I just opened it up a little more open and we did physical and emotional safety. So first the police talk about an active shooter drill and things that we do there. Then I spoke in detail about what we do if a, if we happen to have an active shooter threat or if I discover something, a weapon. So I spent a lot of time talking about that. And then we got into a little of what I talked about here in the climate. And parents were concerned, they're fearful of course, if they have to get a message from me that says that they, we have found an airsoft gun on the bus. That's extremely upsetting for a parent. So that was one of their concerns, but I think they, they, I think what they liked hearing was that no matter whether it's a toy, a prop, it doesn't matter what it is, we take it as seriously as can be and we don't work in isolation. We work central office, we work with the police, we work with mental health agencies to ensure that there is no threat, that we would never allow someone back. So it can go from, in middle school, students have a tendency to stay and do ridiculous bits. So it really becomes the community agency's job to assess whether that's silly middle school statement or whether that's really concerning. And we don't do that on our own. So I, I think they were happy to hear that. They liked hearing about some of the things that we were doing to move the class. That was actually some of their suggestions. Let's get them out of that same room. They wanted to see more fun, like inter-cohort fun, where kids could be kids again. So we started slowly, maturely putting some of those things back. And I'm probably forgetting other things, but that was pretty much the, the general gist.
And then my last question was just on your data at Lance. You talked about neutral and favorable together.
Yeah, we can, we can tease that out for you.
If you could just send that to me.
Absolutely.
Because when I hear neutral, I hear someone who's unengaged, they don't really care, either way.
Yeah.
When we lump that in with positive, I don't necessarily know that we're seeing a percentage of people who are actually being positive.
We agree, we agree. Yeah, we do look at it. And you know what we really look at, if you want to know the truth, is the unfavorable. That's where my eye goes and I have the ability to see who that is. The desk of data will drill down sometimes to, we can see exactly which kids. I was able to see last year which students didn't feel that they were connected and we were able to actually put them on, we made them rock ambassadors or, you know, so that they had a role because that's important to feel like you belong. So I, my eye goes to the critical, to tell you the truth, a lot also. So I think, yeah.
Well, thank you because I, I heard a lot of stick and carrot in your presentation. And I really like the stick and a carrot, you know, discipline, but also finding that reason to move forward. It was a beautiful presentation. I really liked what I was hearing.
Thank you.
I could partially consider Mr. Coles' response to that. And then I know of people that were, I don't know if they attended the forums or not, but I do know that they had been involved with kids that have gone to your, that go to your school. Someone who has reached out to the chairperson, someone made an appointment to come down physically and meet with Mrs. Cooney to say, I love City Hill, I wanted you to help change the narrative. People who reached out to us that have seen and communicated to us that how you have been along for the ride with you and have things that are seeing improvements and are, are happy, I guess for lack of a better term.
Yeah, yeah. And we really aren't there yet, but I appreciate that.
No, I think the parent forums though were great to act, to provide folks that engaged with you. And I heard some good feedback come out. So thank you, thank you for your presentation.
I have a quick question. You said, you mentioned you have a lot of, you're getting a lot of feedback from staff and students as well. I'm just curious, like, and you have, and you do it in different formats, like the, the principal advisory committee and such. What's the best idea you got from a teacher that you're implementing now? And what's the best idea you got from a student that you're implementing now? That you're, or your favorite, just you could say favorite.
Oh gosh, I wish I could say that there were one. I mean, staff are really comfortable with me, so I get two or three a day. So I was like, I have to think, can you help me out here? I'm trying to think. I think some of what we did with the institutional environment, I'd love to take credit for, but it wasn't me. I usually, I have some analytical teachers and they'll say to me, like, hey, it's getting, it's kind of crowded over here. Why don't you look at that? So I think those things, although they sound silly, really do make a big difference. Staff, what, maybe, maybe getting us all off the patio in the morning. I was so resistant to that change and the minute we did it, we just sort of relaxed. You could almost feel like there was just too much energy in one spot. So maybe that was one from the staff. The students give us ideas in terms of the inter-cohort. Like we need, we have, we are dying to see someone other than the 24 people that we have seen all day. Please, you know, let us see our friends. So we began relaxing a little. We just have to make sure that they sign in for contact tracing purposes, but we allowed them when they came down for the, the award or the reward to sit with their friends. And they, they really said they appreciated. They said that was their best day ever at City Hill. That was this week. We had three days in a row and the kids actually told, not me, they didn't tell me. They told their other teachers when they went up to, they saw their Spanish teacher or whoever. They said that was our favorite day ever at City Hill. So I think they finally felt like, oh my gosh, this feels normal.
Well, considering the power and you can give your staff and your students an opportunity to kind of dictate how their days are run. I think that's going to be, I think that's going to be hugely helpful to move forward. And I think, I think it changes the climate a little bit, you know?
Definitely. I know they feel heard.
Yeah.
I know they feel heard.
Thank you very much, Paul D. Nice job.
One more question.
Oh, sure.
Okay, on these parent forums that you had, practically how many parents did you have show up?
We had probably 20 in person and then another maybe three or four online. I opened up online and in, in person. So some came to the forum, but I've been hearing from, a lot of parents are calling. They were really concerned. We had like a spike in behaviors. It seemed like it all happened in a three-week period where it just blew up at the school. And it was just, I, I couldn't go anywhere. Supermarket, I couldn't go anywhere without getting a hit. So I was like, oh my goodness. And then little by little, we put some things in place and, you know, the board was generous enough to allow us to have the police that the presence that helped slow the roll a little bit. And then the additional security guards, we just needed more bodies. It was just, you know, it was too much at once.
I wish you could have anticipated what, you know, I really wish you could have anticipated this. You know, because we kind of came into this year excited about getting back to school, back to in-person learning, you know, and, and, but also, you know, with concerns and stuff like that. But we had no idea that we were going to, that the environment was going to be like this. You know, we are losing teachers that are un, and we're not the only ones. It's a, it's a national crisis, you know, that we're, that teachers are coming in. They're like, you know what, this is not what I came, this is not what I became a teacher for. You know, I did not become a teacher so I could teach kids online. I did not become a teacher to break up fights. You know what I mean? Like that's not always the goal. And so you, you get this influx of, of student involvement dictating the climate as well as, as well as us as a board. And so I, I, I'm really pleased to see how much effort we all collectively as a community have put together to try to kind of solve these problems. And I, and I, and I just wanted to say thank you because I know it was probably an extremely stressful time for you because I felt the stress and I know the board did as well. But I just wanted to say thank you for all your efforts and your energy that you put into this. I know we're not done by any means, but I think collectively as we continue to work as a community with the families and the parents involved, I think we're going to be able to get to a place that's a lot more agreeable for everybody. We can get back to just focusing on student improvement, student learning and student benefit. So thank you. I just wanted to say thank you and kind of acknowledge that.
And I want to thank Mrs. Mezzo, Mr. Jawidzik. Mrs. Mezzo is an exceptional administrator. She has got an amazing team at City Hill, our faculty, staff that care very much about the education. Safety will be the whole child at City Hill. I think that what we saw today is somebody who gives voice to those whom she leads, students, families, engagement. She does that consistently. And I believe, yes, we are in some challenging times, but there's no better administrator and faculty and staff to, that I would rather have with our middle school students and we're going to keep getting better and every day. Thank you for everything you do. I know you work 24/7, 7 days a week. Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you all.
So as a reminder, all snow days this year will be traditional snow days. Days off where the school day is made up in June. Days off where it will be made up in June. So the state is continually, or still rather not allowing virtual snow days. So just a reminder, I sent out a communication to families. An update on our voluntary testing. So we began the voluntary testing from the COVID-19 project detect for unvaccinated or partially vaccinated students pre-K6 that began last week. 379 students from that demographic, or I should say from pre-K6 engaged or participated. And that accounts for about 17% of our pre-K6 students. So I had sent out to you, and then we sent it out, I sent it out to you in draft format, the Screen and Stay protocol that came from the Connecticut State Department of Education. Really it came from D V H. And what Screen and Stay, so I want to just make sure, if I have any opportunity, if you have any questions regarding what that protocol is. if you have any questions in regards to what they're following. So I'll review it quickly since we launched it last week. Screen and Stay was developed by DPH to provide temporary relief, right? So they authorized Screen and Stay for the fall semester. So right now, they're saying it's authorized through the fall semester. And that's for students who are not vaccinated, partially vaccinated, but not fully vaccinated, and staff, who are not fully vaccinated. They developed certain, in certain, very specific circumstances, protocols that would allow you not to quarantine. So if we know based on that protocols currently, if you're exposed and you don't have symptoms, and you're vaccinated, you don't have to quarantine. If you are unvaccinated, you do. However, there's a criteria for Screen and Stay that provides for you to screen and stay if you're asymptomatic and not quarantine. So it was a strategy developed in relation to some other states who do test and stay. They believed that test and stay, that there would be, really would be not equitable. It would be access and opportunity problems throughout the state and some of the rural communities. And DPH created what's called Screen and Stay. So basically, in Screen and Stay, I'm going to go to the next page, and we're going to talk about the specific circumstances. So in Screen and Stay, if you are exposed inside the school building, and they really mean that school, but inside the school building, and if you're masked, it's one of the criteria for you to qualify for Screen and Stay. Another is that you were exposed outside, masked or unmasked, in a supervised setting, recess or mask breaks, et cetera. On a school bus or other school provided during the school day, non-athletics, bus, and the contact, the case and the contact were correctly masked the entire exposure, you qualify. The student or staff person identified as a close contact remains asymptomatic. The family would hand in an agreement, an agreement, and they would agree to screen for symptoms daily during the period. If that's the case, then you essentially, if you qualify, you wouldn't quarantine. You'd be screening daily, and if symptoms developed, then you would get tested and revert to the normal protocol. Situations that don't support Screen and Stay. And this is where we see almost all of the cases coming from are outside of school. Household, familial, sleepover, little league, I guess now might be, now we're transitioning with these over, et cetera. But friends hanging out, family members, that does not qualify. It's in-school exposure, right? Because this is based on data regarding school spread. It's safe to Screen and Stay because of the mitigation strategies that are implemented in schools. If you're in school now, and there was a situation where you were within six feet without your mask, so if you're in cafeteria within six feet, or snack, or classroom, then you wouldn't qualify for Screen and Stay. So I think it's important for us to clarify this with you, because there, every time we have this, we go through this with families that are, sometimes they qualify and sometimes they don't. If you were sitting next to somebody with your mask off, if we, we weren't wearing your mask appropriately during that time, you're not going to qualify, and you're going to quarantine based on the data. So this does not apply to extrapricular activities outside of the regular school day, such as sports and athletics or an after-school care. It also doesn't apply to pre-K. We see as rules that are different for pre-K, given the lack of an anticipated vaccine for children five years or younger. So that essentially is Screen and Stay. I have a couple more slides on sports before I open it up for any questions. So CIAC winter sports guidelines were released on December 7. And I'm going to, I'll put a little caveat to, this is what the guidance from CIAC, and this is where we're at right now. It alluded to the fact that they're subject to change based on current context. And since they released it, the context has changed a little bit, so we'll see. So as of right now, the mask guidance, which is the guidance that I think is different than previous, is that all students must, regardless of vaccination status, all students wear, student athletes wear masks through the end of the fall semester, so through December 23rd, at our last day of school. After December 23rd, CIAC guidelines, which were approved by DPH, student athletes who are vaccinated can take their mask off during competition, but only during competition. All other times, they put it on. Bench, locker room, practice, all the time at practice, et cetera. Masks are required for unvaccinated or partially vaccinated student athletes during competition as well. I'm giving the general overview. Obviously, they're not going to wear them in the pool, and there's other carve-outs, but I linked the full guidelines. They've been in Word docs for your review. Masks are also, because this is a federal thing, required on school buses if we have an away game. So this chart, and I know it's not the easiest, I'm sorry, I'm clicking here as if I'm controlling. The chart on the next page comes from the guidelines. It'd be easier to read in the, in the seven-page PDF document from the CIAC that I uploaded. But this is where it gives you the carve-out for, you know, cheerleading and dance if they're doing, they can take it off during certain instances, just like in swimming and diving, they're going to take it off. Jumping in indoor track, even if they're unvaccinated, during the jump, they'd be able to take it off, and then they'll wear it right back up.
Yes, safety.
Exactly. I took wrestling off, because we don't have a whole, we might have a team of one, actually. But like wrestling, and when you're grappling, you're, they're, you're taking it off, because it's dangerous to have it on if you're grappling. I don't know if that's the right word, in regular women wrestling, but it seems right. Yeah, that's right. I should, yeah, good. See that, Marilyn? So this is the one where, right now, I've been, I think about this an awful lot, too. So as of right now, fans are permitted to attend all sports, but must follow, of course, any and all masks. And health guidelines in place. Masks are required indoors in schools, so they'd be required for our games. I'm going to continue to work with the health department to determine if there's a need to limit spectator attendance at specific events. Mainly, I'm thinking about our basketball games, and so we've been having conversations with the NBL and other superintendents, and I will communicate out to the greater community if there's a need to limit, limit attendance. The guidelines are already called for, limiting attendance at inside events such as concerts, et cetera. But right now, the CIAC leaves it up to the district in regards to, so. Fans are coming, fans are going to be permitted, they're going to have to wear masks. And if that needs to change, I'm going to, or let the community know. Any questions on return to school? Calling it return to school, because that's been the constant, we've been here.
So I have quite a few comments on this topic that I'm talking about today. I have a couple of problems with what's going on here, especially with Screen and Stay. So Screen and Stay has changed the quarantine time for our students. A month ago, they were quarantined for 10 days, and now they're quarantined for 14. So we've increased the out of classroom time.
That's not true. You have to screen for 14 days. They're not, as a matter, the quarantine numbers not increased. As a matter of fact, I'm going to, I'll make this, I'll make some assumptions, Mr. Poole, based on our previous conversations, that Screen and Stay would be something that we would support as it gives unvaccinated not to stay in school if they screen. And it's only an assumption, but the 14-day, even if we only had to quarantine for 10 days, it's always been screened for 14 days. Always, there's always been, look for symptoms for the full 14 days, even if you come back prior.
The other problem with that is that we are treating, we created a class of children and citizens that's different. There's no equity in that. We are not creating an exceptional experience for each and every student, as you said earlier, or giving them the best day ever, as our principal told us just a few minutes ago. Because we are treating them differently based on something that is outside of child's control, because this is a parental decision. And it's absolutely segregation, it's absolutely discrimination. And something as a school district, we should be absolutely disgusted and appalled of. We have a, and I printed for everyone, so you can look over. Thank you to Mr. Francis for doing that for me, and I'll pass around. We have a tried and true policy on the school board. That's up for revision later today, but we follow an attendance truancy and chronic absentee policy. And while there is a mandate in the state for masking currently, and that holds the rule of law, all the other guidance, I think, needs to be taken up and talked about. Because the guidance from the state and the Department of Public Health doesn't have to be followed. And lots of districts across the state are doing it differently. And I'd love to be able to explore with the board, my fellow board members, what guidance we could be following, what guidance, it's about time we just started disregarding.
I guess the only thing I would say to that in regards to the Screen and Stay is that's more of an equalizer.
But we're treating people differently.
We are, based on the guidelines for vaccination versus unvaccination.
And that is not equitable. That doesn't suit the vision of this board or this district. Something I've heard everyone here talk passionately about.
Any questions? Questions?
And then, Sir Chairman, if no one else wants to talk about it, I would just ask that at a future date, whether it be in special session or on our next board meeting, we review all guidance that the Department of Public Health is talking about, and that is an actual mandated, so that we can discuss as a board whether or not we want to continue to follow that guidance or disregard it.
Thank you. I will look at.
I've got one question on that.
Yeah.
The medical, the medical experts or the medical people, I don't know if that's a medical person, so I can't decide if it's right or wrong. I just got to do it my kids in school system. So how can you discuss medical things when you don't have a medical? People have one.
Well, we can discuss them, because we're intelligent people who were elected by our constituents to make decisions. That's our job. And the data is data. If you're an intelligent man, I've heard you talk and heard you look at data. I think all of us can look at data and say, hey, some things are right, some things are wrong. I just, I'd like the chance to review it and to talk to you guys about some of those line items. Because again, I don't think anyone here wants to be treating people differently than we are.
We do it all the time. We do it all the time with polio, we do it all the time with chickenpox, we do it with measles, we do it with a lot of things.
And, and all of those things are different than the flu and COVID, which are wet versus dry viruses.
We're getting killed up hundreds of thousands of people.
It did, and it's not 2020 anymore.
And if we didn't have the vaccines out there and take the care of it? I'm not saying it's true.
One of our student reps has a, has a question.
Yeah, so on the topic of equity, I understand that there is a fear of not treating anyone differently. But the whole point of equity is recognizing that students have different needs, and that those specific needs should be met at different levels. So I, well, I, I wonder, like, if, if treating unvaccinated or vaccinated students differently with the Screen and Stay is to make sure that those unvaccinated and therefore vulnerable students, populations, like, their needs are met. It, it, yes, it is treating them differently, but it's because of equity. It's to recognize that they do have different needs as opposed to, as opposed to vaccinated students. So I guess my question is, what is, why do you feel that that isn't equitable?
I'm glad you asked, because right here on the CDC's website, which I brought up today to be prepared for this discussion, COVID, and I'm going to read all of it. COVID-19 vaccines are effective at preventing the section of serious illness and death. Most people who get the COVID-19 are unvaccinated. However, since vaccines are not 100% effective at preventing infections, some people who are fully vaccinated will still get COVID-19. They go out and talk about how it's still spreadable, how it's still catchable, and it's still deadly to vaccinated and vaccinated. So if it's a personal choice that a parent can make for them, their family, their child, and you can still get the disease and die from the disease, either way, we should not be treating people differently based on their personal choices.
The same thing happens with the flu. You have people who take the flu shot and who die. No vaccine is 100% correct for everyone. So you have the choice of taking the shot or not. And how many people are you talking about that are unvaccinated as opposed to how many people are vaccinated? And how many people have been saved by the vaccinations? We're talking about a handful of people who will still get services. It isn't that we're shutting them out and they're never going to, you know, come to school again. We're thinking about a greater community than the handful of people you're talking about. They're still going to receive their educational services. But you've got to look at the greater population also. You don't want people, I mean, if you've got people unvaccinated and you're throwing them out there with the greater, with, with your kids. How many parents actually want unvaccinated people around their kids? They don't. You're deluding yourself. They don't.
That's a very dangerous statement, though, you just said, because you're, again, creating a discriminatory and discriminatory statement by saying, how many people want someone near them or not near them based on something? Okay? And you just talked about a small portion of people. Mr. Rantini's own report here says only 17% of people signed up for the voluntary screening. We're also talking about a very small amount of people who are still so scared of this virus. We should be talking about pluralities or majorities, not minorities on either side. And our lane should be education, not public health.
We're not dealing in public health. We're following guidelines, which we do for education, following guidelines. We're not medical people, we're not doctors, we're not lawyers. That's why we have experts, data, in guiding our schools and educating our students.
And again, all masks.
And I know a lot about discrimination, so don't.
I do as well.
Exactly.
And, and I think that all masks are a chance for this board to sit and talk about these guidelines, because it is our job to decide whether or not we do them or not. Whether you think you're a medical expert or not, that's the job we took. And this board's makeup is different today than it was last year, because the parents of this city, the parents of the constituents of this borough made it different for a reason.
Yeah. You're always going to have differences, but there aren't things, guidelines, as far as your health, your safety, that I, and I don't see why you would want to cross over them.
Because it's.
And that's my opinion, as you're giving your, your opinion.
Yes, ma'am.
So.
So I had noted that you would like to review that in the future. Thank you. So then we'll move into our monthly reports. And that begins with our student rep's report. Tenzin and Jerksey.
What do you think, everyone? We're going to give you some updates on our student liaison as well as social, emotional learning updates in our high school. So this past month, we have sent the student liaisons to Hillside and Cross Street, and they have conducted a group interview with six students at Hillside and 42 students at Cross Street. Our Hillside student liaison reports that students are engaged and enjoying their classes, especially in, when, and I quote, "teachers are into what they're teaching." Generally, we have found that students who are enjoying class-wide discussions and the close to your everyday generic lessons and student choice with assignments. Just as an update, we, our City Hill liaison have met with their student reps, but we just haven't put it in our report because it's been a couple of days ago.
Yeah, so our Cross Street student liaison led a group interview and a survey. Our sample size was 42 students. Had gauged that students are developing leadership skills, they are running canned food drives, and leading a cleanup effort on school premises. And in terms of the school culture at Cross Street, 31% felt neutral about liking school, but 42.9% liked school. And 26.2% felt strongly that they like, about liking school. And this is a separate statistic, but 78.6% of students felt that they were supported by teachers and given encouragement and choice about what they are learning. And, but one thing to note, though, is that although we have an appropriate sample size, these students were, were picked from each school and not randomly selected. But regardless, these findings provide a general evaluation of the efforts to increase social, emotional, and student-centered learning.
For the high school, students have been supported in their social, emotional development, provide advisory lessons. Since the start of this school year, these filing five-weekly seminars have provided safe spaces for students to learn and grow, topics including reflections about goals for academics, relationships, and leisure, discussions on belonging, and community, and interest, and mindfulness. In December, advisories are combating the winter blues or seasonal depression with wellness checks and a holiday-themed contest between the advisory and classrooms.
And having a social, a socially and emotionally responsible education that recognizes the complexities and challenges of development and schooling has placed students and their well-being and at the center of their education. At Hillside and Cross Street, we've observed that such a social, emotional learning practices have correlated with feelings of support. And at the high school level, though, a wish is for less presentations and more discussions in social, emotional learning.
Thank you, guys. Thank you, guys, both very much. We will then move into the facility use report. Is there any questions on the facility use report? Seeing none, we'll move into the human resource report. Is there any questions on the human resource report?
Just a comment, please, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
After our last meeting, I did reach out to the superintendent and Mr. Lawler about the amount of staff leaving. It was brought up again today in public comment, and so I just wanted to acknowledge that they did provide me with further indications on why we lost those people. And most, the majority of them, I'd say the plurality rather, told them just move down to other opportunities. And some of the information that I got, we can certainly talk about offline, about how we can strengthen our offers so that we are bringing more people here and they're not leaving us to go to other districts. But I was pleased to see that there wasn't like a glaring problem in something going on. And I think, thank you, guys, for providing that information afterwards.
Yep. And then we'll move on to the enrollment report. Any questions on the enrollment report? Seeing none, we'll move on to the finance report. Any questions on the finance report? Seeing none, we'll move on to the fire drill crisis code report. Any questions on the fire drill report? Seeing none, we'll move into old business, which is oil, diesel, and unleaded gas production.
Right, so Mrs. Riss shared the two memos. You recall, last night we debated, last meeting, we debated this, the. You had authorized.
Situation.
Again? The Mrs. Riss wrote memos to you indicating and informing you that we locked in with the borough at a lower rate because prices, as directed by you, went down and we locked in with the borough. That's correct. So, thank you. If you have any questions, Mrs. Riss will be happy to answer them. If not, I think we can move on.
Thank you, Ms. Riss. Thank you. We'll then move on to new business, air purifiers for schools, our first record.
Yeah, and this was discussed, I'll take this one, and then Michael will be happy if we have any questions. But we recently met with the facilities committee. Mr., Mr. Menardi had been researching for the beginning of the year, air purifiers for our schools. We, the report that he wrote certainly is in board docs for, for your review. Facilities committee met, reviewed it. You can actually see two units in the back of the room. We have a very large unit that's made for larger spaces, and then there's another one to the right of that underneath, I think, the light switch that's more of a smaller unit for classrooms. So through his report, he, we conducted interviews, we went out to the companies, folks came here, we researched, and he equalized certainly the different technologies, and we made a decision to move with, or move towards, in use, NQ. So we got multiple quotes. This memo, of course, is informing you of such. At our meeting, where we left off was the maintenance plan. So we followed up, and we have another maintenance plan. We have several maintenance plans, but I'm going to, I would like to move forward without actually selecting a maintenance plan. Here's why. One, we contacted one company. Have you got, the other ones calling that yet? So one of the things that we're doing is reaching out to folk, to people that actually have been using these air purifiers. We know of one company that, that everything is, they haven't done anything. Everything is working great. They've done nothing for, you know, just for a year. We have other company, we, we know of other places that have been using their technology, and they have them. We are waiting to hear that from them. So we've called out, we'll go take, we'll visit. We're gonna maintain them. We're gonna have a maintenance plan. I don't think we need a maintenance plan to do the purchase. So we have one that's drastically reduced. It's, it would be, I think it's $73,000 for the year. $73,000 for the year. It changes all filters and prefilters four times a year. That plan is uploaded here for your review as well. But we don't necessarily need to commit to that, because we also have an à la carte, where we can just purchase the filters, and the materials would be like $50,000. But I don't know if, so we would have to weigh our options. So what we're thinking is, we're gonna, we're gonna learn more about what exactly you have to do in regards to maintenance, just changing filters. And then some of the other materials, we'll just, when it breaks down, we'll replace the lamp and other things. So we have a warranty. Now, the warranty certainly is extended based on the maintenance plan that you do, right? To get everything bells and whistles, we would, could engage in a full maintenance plan. But as you know, the maintenance plan that was first put forward to us is really cost per hour. Why would we do that when in six years, we would just buy all new ones? When we know that the, the changing of the filters is sort of essential? So we have, I'd, I'd like to purchase these things soon. We're now closed up. I wanna get these in all of our classrooms. And then we're gonna, we're still gonna work, talk to all of those other companies, and we'll communicate with the facilities committee in regards to which maintenance plan we're going to engage with. Whether we're going to buy them and replace filters on our own, or we're gonna do one that's a little more reasonable, or another variation of that one.
So can you talk about the funding for that?
I'm sorry, what's that?
The funding.
Yes, this is a part of our ARP grant. Right, so we have money, American Rescue Plan, that we are putting into ventilation. One of the things that we're committed to doing is putting in the air purifier, the machine that you have that re-cleaned the air here every 15 minutes, that big one. So this plan puts one in every classroom and most, most learning spaces, so cafeterios, gyms. And it's just an added layer, especially to the schools that don't have the complete HVAC system, such as the high school. But we're still gonna do those in places that have the more robust HVAC systems, too. Then we have other money that we'll be talking about at another meeting, where we're looking more at HVAC systems. But that gets, that gets priced in.
So my comment here is, I, I don't love the idea of purchasing a $5 million purchase.
This is not, this is $900,000.
Of the, just the, the one we talked about in the facilities.
Yes.
Report was, $5 million air purifier system.
No, not, this is $900,000. The, of, we have $6 million dedicated to ventilation, $5.1 million is going to improve the actual HVAC systems. So for example, we could replace all of Hopbrook's HVAC and air conditioning, or they don't have air conditioning, they don't really have HVAC, so it wouldn't be replacing, we'd be putting it in. That would probably be about $3.5 million. So what we're doing is, we're looking at our schools, like we're looking at Hopbrook, Hillside, and St. because they have, they can't control airflow, they control airflow the least, when you think about all of our schools, just in regards to their windows and, and, and the time that they were built. This is still a large purchase. It's a large purchase. We're gonna maintain them. I just don't think that we have to know what the maintenance plan is going, the exact maintenance plan is gonna be. And if that was the case, well, then I would say, well, we'll, we'll do the $70,000 one for the first eight quarters, and then evaluate it after that. All I'm saying, Mr. McCool, is that I think we still have time to do a little more homework, to choose the best one. And I'm happy in about a month from now, when it could take, uh, uh, that time just to get them installed, we'll have a maintenance plan. I'm happy to reconvene the facilities committee and go over that with them.
Right, but to not have a maintenance plan in place ahead of time, we're buying machines that need to be maintained over time.
Sure.
And with money that isn't part of our budget. We're buying with grant money.
Yep.
That we got from the feds or the state.
Correct.
Well, that grant money's not there forever. And so by not knowing what the maintenance plan is ahead of time, we create a ledge that we fall off. If we don't have a plan in place, maintain equipment over time.
Yep, I'm actually doing the opposite. What I don't want is to commit to a long-term maintenance plan that we don't need to do, that would create a long-term sort of budget issue. So I think we, you and I both want the same thing. I'm just saying, we've studied the five purifiers. We've, these ones, they, we had, we piloted in all schools, not all schools, but a bunch of schools have had, we piloted the machines, they give us data. All I'm saying is, we're gonna choose the best option. And we really utilize every single cent of that grant money to support us. But I also know that, you know, vendors are in the business of making money, and, you know, the first maintenance plan that they shared with us was, you know, $170,000 a year. That's more than we do for boilers and everything else. So this one is much better at the $70,000 range, but we also have their pricing, where we could do à la carte. So we also have, even if we didn't choose a plan, we have, we know what it costs to replace those things and then maintain it, even if we were doing it ourselves.
Right, and you said to do it ourselves, we'd have to hire someone to do something.
No, our maintainers could do it. I don't know that that's the best option, to be honest.
Sure, and all I'm saying is, I think you need to know.
But we also have, we also have a warranty. So we would have a maintenance plan, I, I would argue that we would have a maintenance plan in the first two or three months. But I think it's really important for us to talk to some of the other folks in regards to maintenance, too.
Mr. Stolten.
Yes.
What would be your recommendation?
I like the way we're going right now. I would rather see, we have time. We're not gonna get the equipment for a month probably anyways, but. We've got time to investigate the plans for maintenance in that month or till. And that's the way we should go, because $175,000 is a lot different already, and it high-walts us that much.
Yeah.
We could probably get a lot of material with that.
Here's, here's my, here's my thinking, right? So here's, here, here really what it's about. It's, it's, we have 70, $73,000 that replaces filters every four quarters. Well, I wanna find out if we really need to do it every four quarters. If we don't need to do it every four quarters, I would much rather divide that in four, change the filters if that's the standard, change them once a year. Now our maintenance plan is a fourth of the $70,000, that's all. So maybe, so that, that's all I'm saying. We have a proposed maintenance plan that's a lot better than our first, and we have the cost of every component of the machines that we know that we could do ourselves. I think we'd be putting our, our maintainers in a position not to be able to service and other, other things during the changing of the filters time, so that would be my option. I'm just trying to get, before we lock in, to get a better one. So at the very least, we won't take any, we won't take any action for a week, and we'll see if we can get answers to the maintenance plan, and then I will keep you guys notified.
And I think when you said we're gonna hire a lot of maintainers, thinking $175,000, we go toward them, hire maintainers, just to work on these requirements.
Yeah.
And it would be more cost-effective than doing their maintenance program.
So that, that was.
That was, that was just one of our suggestions within discussion.
Yes.
It wasn't necessarily our, our guarantee plan, but it was just open, it was just saying, it was open to interpretation. We're saying, hey, listen, this amount of money to spend on a maintenance program didn't make, didn't seem fiscally responsible. So we had to come up with some solutions, because we still wanna get air purifiers, because as you mentioned, these things are important. So I wanna, we got, we gotta address that, we gotta kind of take a look at it, what makes sense for us to spend financially. But I, I, I think we're not gonna do it if we don't know how much money we're gonna spend. We're gonna know how much money we spend before we make the call. If, if something changes, we can make those changes. But I don't wanna go to the town and say, hey, we're gonna increase our budget by, you know, a half a million dollars because we have to maintain air purifiers. I don't think they're gonna be happy with it, they're gonna understand, but I don't think they're gonna be happy with it.
So the most we're gonna spend right now is $70,000. The most that we can spend on a maintenance plan that they came back with is 70.
Well, you mean the least, right?
What's that?
No, it's the new high end, or it's the new plan.
Yeah, the $175,000 is gone. That was excessive. That was like building a new one every year.
Right.
The new plan, right now, 70 is our ceiling. What I'm saying is, is if it's appropriate to divide that into four, instead of doing it every four quarters, so I know that I change my filter in my furnace four, four times a year. Three times a year, four times a year?
Four times.
Right.
So four times a year, I can do that in a quarter.
Right. We're learning more, and if, if, if I can take, make that 70 be two times a year, so we might have to call other experts or other consultants. We're working with a consultant. I wanna consult with another consultant to see if we can cut that in half, a third, you know what I'm saying? That's all. So you give us a week, I'll get you that answer, we'll take no action, and we'll take no action before we get a little more answers. No problem. No problem at all. We all want the same thing. I just wanna get these in schools as, as soon as possible. But as you know, what I highlighted is, this company has been around a really long time. They've been doing this for medical, there's a lot of other startups, so it took months and months and months to evaluate. I get emails every day from.
Air purifiers.
Air purifier, like crazy, yes, right. So Mr. Menardi did a really good job. And then the other thing that's really good is, we liked these when they were local. We liked the, the local aspect, they were out of hand then. They also just are purchasing, building a huge, they're building in our industrial park, so they're coming in an architect, too, which we had, we had committed even before. It's just a nice to know that we're, it's also a local business here.
Okay.
Does that, if they're that noisy in the classroom?
Well, well.
We don't have classrooms that are that big.
That's, that's not, that's not a classroom model. You're talking about auditorium, and, so we're, we can control, the little one over there.
I'll be able to show you later.
Yeah. That's why, we actually put it, we already have them there in classrooms. Yeah.
I just want them to stay a little.
Yes, 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 yes. Yeah, I know, we knew that was not. We didn't purchase that, they just dropped it off the other day, so you can see, really large model. Sorry.
What's this team donated at the bottom?
They donated two of them to, the two large, two of the larger units, to the auditorium.
To the hill.
To the hill, yes, thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you for that information. We'll then move into policy revision memo.
Great, so we have a, a bunch of first reads, and what I want to, we don't, we didn't have a policy committee scheduled, and because committees were likely changing, we have a whole bunch of policies. We have a lot of law changes over the summer that are still impacting policies, lots and lots and lots. We're gonna have a lot of policy work this whole entire year. So what I did was, I took some of the policies that really were changes in law that were required to do, and just brought right to the board instead of the policy committee. If, and, and happy to send something to, to the policy committee if need be, but these policies are, are pretty cut and dry, they're aligned to new legislation. We really don't have room for movement here at all, in my opinion. So the first policy that we have, and you have it for your review, is 1,000 board operations. It's policy 1331. And we revised it in, because of the law. For, so now that we, smoking extends to any area of the school building, it extends to electronic nicotine delivery systems, vapor product on school grounds, but also using an electronic cannabis delivery system in such locations. So with the, with marijuana becoming and cannabis becoming legal, we, we need to now reinforce that, include cannabis as not appropriate and illegal on school grounds, right? Before it was in its drug category, now you're gonna see a lot of these have to do with smoking. You can't, so changes in the law necessitated this. There's no real other major change there. Questions, or should I move on? This first read, we're not voting until next time, but. So you'll have the month. Similar, the next policy, alcohol, tobacco, and drug-free workplace, 4128. We revised the policy in light of the law, which I've cited there. It revises the definition of smoking, smoking. It clarifies that the prohibition on smoking extends, again, like before, any area of the school. It includes vaping, vaping products. It includes vaping products and also electronic cannabis delivery systems. But also further revise the policy to clarify that, while Connecticut law allows for the legal use of marijuana under certain circumstances, because marijuana is still prohibited under federal law, use of marijuana at work, outside of work, impairs employee, employee to perform their job, constitutes violation of this policy. So what do I mean? Well, even if you think you're, even if you think marijuana is legal, it's not for us, we're under federal, right? So you can't have it on school grounds. Employees aren't going to be permitted to use it, et cetera. Drug and alcohol, now we're in, five thousand students, drug and alcohol used by students, fifty-two twenty. We revised it based on the law, I cited there, concerning the use, sale, possession of alcohol or controlled drugs by students on school property. Essentially, the law changed to say that the selling of cannabis should be, the consequences for that should not be any different than for alcohol. So sale or possession of cannabis, they would face for their use sale the same as possession for alcohol. So there was a minor change there, in line again with law changes. Pause, I know. So next, another five thousand students, chemical health for student athletes. Again, similarly, we revised it based on the law, related to alcohol and controlled drugs. In regards to, the consequences should be the same. Or similar, they shouldn't be any greater for one than the other. Okay, now we have one that's a little different, but it's still, it's not related to cannabis. It's related to student attendance, truancy, and chronic absenteeism. So what you have is fifty-one thirteen and fifty-one thirteen R. We traditionally vote on the administrative regulations with the policy, but we don't have to vote on the administrative regulations. Superintendent development if those based on the policy of the board. That said, the majority of the changes were in the regulations. The policy changed the same except for the legal references, since the laws were amended, most of which were amended in this policy in the June special session, which is typical in legislation. That's where they throw some seven-hundred-and-ninety-page document, like this time. And there's a lot in that, in those seven-hundred-and-ninety pages. So basically, and it's a bit, my memo is long here, because based on the law, the State Department of Education is revising its definitions for excused and unexcused absence. And they're going to do that in line with what they need to do for permission to attend virtual, which will begin in a few years with high school, high school only. But really, what this policy does is, it articulates that students are now permitted to take as sick days two mental health days per year. And that's what the policy says, essentially. And it also changes the age of when you are permitted to drop out. And you'll notice, when you read the policy, it goes from seventeen to eighteen. And it's sort of phased in over the course of the next few years. So we have change next year and then the year after. I'm trying not to verbatim read what, what there is in the memo, because it's pretty long.
I like that, and that policy you're addressing, what you brought up in search of general. It's nice to see it's reflected in the law policy now.
Thank you.
Any questions on the policy revisions?
Just, just one.
Yeah.
And you may have told us this before. The designees, I think it was for one of the surgeon seizures with the chemicals, the athletes. Are those individuals appointed at the beginning of the year? Or how does that occur?
The, the designees for what specifically? Is it in that?
Or say for surgeon seizure?
It would be the administrators of the building.
But are they, do they, if the principal isn't there, he has to designate? Or if the vice-principal isn't there, I mean?
So if no administrators are there? Yeah, the, at that point, the lead teacher would go to central office. We would have an administrator do it, or somebody from central office would go support the next person in charge.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay. That brings us to citizens' requests for an agenda item. So for our BOE policy, any citizen can make a request in writing to the Secretary of the Board with a copy of the request to the superintendent, which we received at our last meeting. And the Secretary of the Board then presents the request to the Board at its next regular reading, which we are, Ethel was presenting to, to the Board. And then we discuss and vote on adding this to the next agenda, or a future agenda. And this letter reads, "Attention, Secretary of the Board and Mr. Montini, I respectfully request that we ask DPH, we ask the DPH to be invited to answer questions submitted by parent board members regarding mask mandates and vaccine quarantine protocols at a future Board of Education meeting. Thank you, Vanessa Van Horn." I don't know if anyone else has any discussion. If you want me to start?
Why don't you, if you want to start?
Yep, so my opinions are, our board meetings are business meetings that are conducted in public. And this essentially turns it into a forum, which we typically do not do. And the State Department of Public Health does provide a forum, which they are actually having next week, where residents can discuss this information or find information, receive information from them, which is actually in partnership with the State Department of Education. But those are my thoughts. Mr. McCool?
Well, after, speaking about it earlier, I wanted to talk about those things. Mr. Scully's comments were, if he's not a medical expert, I think it'd be great if we could invite a member of the Department of Public Health, the Norwalk Department of Public Health that we work with in conjunction for those packages that Mr. Montini is putting in place, and discuss it as a board session. Maybe it has to be a special session, so we don't monopolize an entire board day. But I think a back-and-forth forum is what the parents are asking for here. And something I would love to participate in.
Thank you. Any other comments?
I mean, I think it is a good idea to have a DPH representative, you know, maybe in a, in a, in a special meeting for us, you know, maybe like a workshop meeting, to just, to help educate us at least. So when we are presented with questions like that, we could have more concrete, or feel more confident in our decision-making. Maybe that's what I'm trying to say. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
So to that, I guess I would say is, I've shared every bit of guideline with you and have developed comprehensive plans that are in alignment. We're not hiding anything. This asks to invite, we can invite, I don't know if they've come. This, the State Department of Education with medical experts is holding a parent forum on December sixteenth.
Right.
That's the appropriate place for this type of conversation. Where we've been pretty transparent. We have addendums and charts, and we follow those things. And we communicate those things. We're not doing anything outside of guidelines.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think the request implies that, though. I think it just, I think it's, they're asking for, I think, or this particular, and I'm making a little bit of an assumption here because it's a brief letter. Just saying, I think she's just looking for a venue like this.
Yep, which is, and our DPH also has phone emails and phone numbers that you can call for information at, at any time.
Okay.
I don't, I mean, we're following guidelines that are prescribed by the State of Connecticut based on the Department of Public Health. We're doing it so that we can remain open in school and keep our kids safe and keep our kids connected. I think this would, this stat tires and takes away from, from the work that we're trying to do, if you keep kids open. Obviously, I work at your will. And if you vote to, to do this, I'll do it. But I, I don't recommend it.
Well, I think we should at least respond and give-
We, we have to. Our policy says, if three people are in a green net, then you add it to a meeting. If not, then the Secretary of the Board, or myself, I would imagine, I'd be the designate, would inform them of, either way.
I think this will satisfy my concern, and I hope it satisfies the other people's concerns.
Yes, I put this in communications, and I put it here on the agenda to match it up, to say this basically is what the state is doing, what you're asking for right here.
Gotcha.
And so the only thing I'd add to that, though, is, I think this person's asking for something in Norwalk. That what you, what you've linked here is a state program where the, the state is going to talk to a hundred and forty-nine towns and all the parents. And it would be really great if we talked right here, right here at home, where it matters. Local control, that's why we have boards event, is about right here in Norwalk.
This is true, but-
I'm not, I'm not so concerned about the proximity as I am the information, you know what I mean? As long as we're providing an opportunity for parents and families and students maybe to get this information, I think that's a good, I think that's a good jumping off point, you know, to start with. And if we find that there's more, if these letters continue, then we might have to consider it and address it more directly.
Yeah, I, I, I mean, I understand, you know, your perspective. Again, we have, we, everything that we do, we link the guidelines, we link things so that people are seeing this.
Mm-hmm.
So-
Well, obviously, some people-
We rely, we rely on medical, on the medical institutions.
Yep.
Any other questions or discussion? Seeing none? Do I have a motion to add this to a future agenda?
I'll motion to add it to a future agenda.
We have a motion by Aaron, do we have a second? And seeing no second, that motion fails. That brings us to BOE consultations. So thank you all for sending me your request for what schools you want to be liaisons to and what committees you want to serve on. So first, I'll start with the committees. So we'll have the policy committee, where Ethel will be the chair. I, myself, will serve on the committee, along with Diana, Tenzin, and Josephine. As, as our student representatives, not BOE representatives. The curriculum committee would be Jason Solozzi as the chair, Erin McCool, Ethel, Tenzin, and Josephine also as student members. The facilities committee would be Jim as the chair, Alicia and Marilyn. And the finance committee would be Marilyn as the chair, Jay, and Erin. And then for the school liaisons, for the high school, would be myself and Alicia. City Hill would be Erin, Marilyn, and Jay. Cross Street would be Alicia and Jay. Hillside would be Mayor Hess. Maple Hill would be myself. Western would be Ethel and Jim. Hartbrook would be Alicia and Erin. Andrew Avenue would be Diana. Salem will be Mayor Hess. And Central Avenue will be Erin and Diana. And either later tonight or tomorrow, I'll send an email to all the principals, letting them know that you're the liaisons, and asking them to keep you up to date on your, on their activities and getting you involved in their school communities.
Would you mind copying Lorraine on that? And she'll post it?
Yep, yes, and, and I know, and Frances wants it also. So I will get it to her.
So then, just really quick, Mr. Chair, I still would like to be on the facilities committee. I don't think you mentioned my name, and I'll make sure that-
Yep, so there are three members of that committee, and you are welcome to-
Okay.
To go participate.
I don't want to leave you hanging, Mr. Scully.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Is that time for like the policy committee as well, as long as we don't have a forum?
As long as there is no quarrel, then you are welcome to attend the meeting. So that brings us to our next item, which is the, again, the forum that the State Department of Education is holding on December sixteen. It is virtual, looks like. And it is on our agenda, posted in board docs. So if anyone in the public is interested in attending that. And I would also assume that it's also located on the State Department of Education website.
Yeah, we have to know if that event's going to be recorded.
Yeah.
It is, yeah.
Sweet. So we could maybe-
So you're going to have them do it live?
Send a link up.
Did someone have a question? I thought I saw you raise your hand, I'm sorry. Okay, so then that brings us to the chairman.
Chairman?
Yes.
Under communication, if I could just talk a moment. You know, we got an email during public comment, about public comment. Another comment about the time change going from five to three, and how disappointing it was from a parent. I know I talked after last meeting. If I had not lumped my motions together, there might have been more support for that. But I think what I'd love to see is two things. The first thing is, I know we're not going to answer or respond to public comment directly, especially after each person. But if we could add an agenda item where after public comment, we discuss public comment amongst the board, even if you limited the time in which we did that, I think it would give the community a chance to see that we're addressing and concerned about their problems and not have to wait till next time to know if we emailed each other and talked. And then if there's any interest in acknowledging those parents from this board, I would make a motion to amend that policy back to five minutes, but only if I think there's a, a group here that would support that.
Yeah, so what I would recommend me do is recommend that to the policy committee to look into, and have them bring it to, to the Board as a recommendation.
I don't know that one.
No, that, but you can still bring it to, you can still recommend it to a committee.
Sure, I will do so, then.
Yeah. And any other communications?
I have a few that someone placed in my possession here. And it's concerning, it's, it's town communication, actually. The Festival of Trees, put on by the United Way. And it said, "I am paying, you have till December seventeenth to buy raffle tickets for the trees. They're very lovely trees. We do it every year. It's a great, great fundraiser for the United Way. Also, for United Way, Linda Ramos is sponsoring an annual toy drive. And it will be at the Park and Rec Building on December twenty-second. You can bring a unwrapped toy or gift cards for local children to the Loaded Goat. Is that right? Also, you can get your pet's picture taken with Santa at the Park and Rec Center. And that's on December thirteenth, from five-thirty to seven o'clock. There are lots of pet lovers out there who want pictures with their animals. And also, visit with Santa at the Rec Center on December seventeenth through the twenty-second, four to eight. And I have just one thing, bit of information. This is from Kay. I'm the representative for the Board on Kay. And this is concerning mental health, which we've talked a lot about tonight. They're piloting a program where they're going to be, they're going to have a mental health app for students, which, which will be customized for the students. They're going to pilot it, and after they pilot this program, they'll disseminate the information to the rest of the school districts. But it, on the app, if the student feels any discomfort, this is outside of school. They can plug into this app. The app has a connection to the school system, and they will notify the schools and make sure that students get the help that they need. So that's just one more thing for mental health. So I'll keep you posted on that. And that's it.
Thank you. That then brings us to adjournment. Does I have a motion to adjourn?
I want a motion to adjourn.
A motion by Jim and a second by Marilyn. Any discussion? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
That motion passed. We are adjourned at nine thirty-one.